Excellent. Good evening and welcome to the pre-town meeting information session ahead of our May 7th annual and special town meeting. A couple housekeeping items for those in the room. This is an informational meeting only. We'll explain all the warrant articles and obviously give a chance for those that are here to ask questions. If you're watching at home or recording of this later, certainly you can contact our office by emailing administration at tingsboroughma.gov or calling 978-649-2300, extension 100, and we can answer any questions that you have ahead of town meeting. The town meeting page on the website, which is located under residents, on the right side, you'll see town meeting, has been populated with the warrant articles, the explanations, the votes of both the finance committee and the select board in terms of their recommendations, and a link to a video explainer produced by Tinsborough TV. You can also find the signed warrant there, the finance committee guidebook, which was released yesterday, and after this meeting, you'll be able to find the presentation from today as well. That page also links you to the budget page, which contains information about the fiscal year 2025 budget, which appears on this warrant as Article 6. That includes the budget presentations we've given to date, the most recent final version of the budget that will be considered by town meeting, a timeline, and much more information. But again, if you have specific questions that you can't find the answer to, our office is happy to help. So I will go through and for the folks that are here, please stop me at any point. We'll keep this as informal as possible. And just a reminder that May annual town meeting is next Tuesday, 7:00 PM at the Tinsborough Elementary School. There will be childcare available courtesy of the Tinsborough Public Schools, and tomorrow is the last day to register for the free shuttle bus program that our Council on Aging is offering. So if you're interested, contact the Council on Aging's front desk. Remember that the bus will drop you off ahead of town meeting, and the bus won't leave town meeting until it's concluded. So plan accordingly. All right, diving right in. We'll start this year with the special town meeting. Special town meeting deals with appropriations for the current fiscal year. Article 1 on the special town meeting warrant is a transfer of funds from free cash. To see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash, the following sums of money for the following purposes, or take any other action relative thereto. On this slide, you see that we have two transfers from free cash. The first one is $264,322 to fund Medicaid reimbursement at the Tinsborough Public Schools. I want to note that this one is a make-up article from last annual town meeting. You may remember that our free cash was not certified in time for the May annual in 2023. So this warrant, this article would have appeared on that warrant. It had to be delayed because of free cash certification. At the same time, we're transferring $190,696 for the same purpose, but that reflects this year's dollar amount. So you have two items on this one. One would have been approved by town meeting or considered by town meeting in May of 2023 had free cash been certified, and one is our standard transfer to cover the Medicaid reimbursements the school department The select board voted 5-0 in favor, and the finance committee voted 5-0 in favor. Article 2 is another so-called make-up article from May 2023's annual town meeting. Sewer Enterprise Fund retained earnings transfer to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $1,025,170 from the Sewer Enterprise Fund retained earnings to the Sewer Enterprise Fund for the current fiscal year, fiscal year 2024. This was shown on Article 11 of the May 2nd, 2023 annual town meeting. Again, although our free cash is separate from retained earnings, the way that the Department of Revenue considers releasing free cash, they tie up the retained earnings as well. And so although there was no question about the retained earnings, it wasn't released in time for town meeting to transfer it for this budget, but it is the current fiscal year, and so this is essentially a make-up article that will fund their fiscal '24 budget. The select board voted 5-0 in favor, and the finance committee also voted 5-0 in favor. Moving on to our annual town meeting. Article 1 is a yearly article that accepts the reports of town officers and committees. This is published in the form of the Annual Town Report, which this year was reformatted to be more user-friendly, present information in a more clear and transparent manner, and I think really highlight the information that residents will find important. That report is available online today at tingsboroughma.gov, and will have hard copies available at both the annual town meeting and the annual town election. You can always pick up a hard copy here in the office as well. The select board voted 5-0 in favor, and the finance committee voted 5-0 in favor. Article 2 is deposits to stabilization funds. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $960,000 from the following sources to the following stabilization funds for the purposes hereafter specified. $400,000 from certified free cash to the Capital Asset Stabilization Fund. That fund is reserved for expenditure on capital assets. This appropriation includes $200,000 that would have been appropriated at the May 2023 annual town meeting. However, again, because free cash wasn't certified, that deposit was never made. On top of the $200,000 from last year, we're requesting to deposit an additional $200,000. The Special Ed Stabilization Fund, $350,000 from certified free cash. This is a fund reserved for unanticipated or unbudgeted costs of special education out of district tuition or transportation. $200,000 to the Debt Stabilization Fund from certified free cash. This is the first appropriation to the Debt Stabilization Fund. That account is reserved for future debt service payments. And $10,000 to the Stormwater Stabilization Fund. That is not coming out of certified free cash. That will come from fiscal year '25 receipts. When stormwater permits are applied for, there's a fee generated, and that money gets deposited into the Stormwater Stabilization Fund. That funds compliance with federal, state, or local stormwater regulations, or local stormwater infrastructure improvements. That was submitted by the select board. The select board voted 5-0 in favor, and the finance committee voted 5-0 in favor. Ms. Crawford.
This is good to go?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I was going to ask you about this Debt Stabilization Fund. I hadn't heard that we ever had one before, so you answered that ahead of time. Why isn't, is this Debt Stabilization Fund, first of all, when did it get established? Was a vote taken to establish one, or just as the manager, you can do it? How is that done?
Town meeting is required to authorize any stabilization fund, to create one, to authorize expenditures from it, and to deposit. I can certainly look into what year it was accepted. Currently, the balance is zero, so we haven't made a deposit unless it was established so long ago that we spent what was in it. But I can confirm when it was accepted by town meeting.
Oh, so it had been approved at some point in time. We didn't just pull it out of the...
Yes, it has sadly appeared in the Finance Committee Guidebook for as long as I've been here with a $0 balance.
I couldn't find it in the last few.
Oh, yeah, no, it's, it definitely, I'll find the year that it was established, though.
See that? It's not on that presentation page. It's usually listed there.
Okay.
Okay, so I don't, I don't see it there. Maybe I missed it. Okay, we'll cut through that. So we're really doing this because of the middle school. Is that not correct?
It could cover any debt stabilization, but my intention in doing this is to help prepare us for future years where things may become tough, and it will allow us to continue to meet that million-dollar contribution that the select board pledged.
So why, why can't we just call this the Middle School Debt Stabilization Fund? Because I fear you talk about what your consideration is. You may not be with us forever.
Correct.
So I'm talking about 20, 30 years down the road, what somebody decides to do with, to do with it.
Sure. Town meeting certainly can rename any debts, any stabilization fund, or create a new one. The one thing I would note is that even though my intent may not always be there if I'm not here, town meeting also is the only entity that can authorize expenditures from the debt stabilization account. So once the money's in there, myself or a predecessor of mine can't, successor of mine, cannot just say, oh, I'll use $200,000. Today, he'd have to, or she would have to present it to town meeting for appropriation.
And I'm hoping you stay here till I no longer, till I no longer exist, but...
I hope so, too. No, of course. All right. Article 3 is an authorization from the appropriation, or from the stabilization funds for fiscal year 2025, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to expend up to the following amounts from the following stabilization funds for the following purposes, or take any other action relative thereto. $800,000 from the Road Stabilization Fund. That fund's purpose is to fund roadway improvements, including related incidental costs such as, but not limited to, drainage, pedestrian access, lighting, and signage. $30,000 from the Stormwater Stabilization Fund, which funds compliance with federal, state, or local stormwater regulations, or local stormwater infrastructure improvements. $350,000 from the Special Ed Stabilization Fund, which funds unanticipated or unbudgeted costs of special education out of district tuition or transportation. This was submitted by the select board, and the select board voted 5-0 in favor, and the finance committee voted 5-0 in favor. Article 4 is another annual article. To see if the town will vote to establish pursuant to the authority granted under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, FY '25 spending limits for the following revolving funds to be expended in accordance with Article XLIV, because I'm terrible at Roman numerals, departmental revolving funds. This is a yearly article that establishes the spending limits that the town can spend from the various revolving funds. Revolving funds are funds that are supported by user fees. One change this year that I want to call attention to is that the public building rentals revolving fund, that spending limit has increased by $15,000. Last year, it was $50,000. The reason being, it is now fully self-sufficient. So this covers the First Parish Meeting House and the Old Town Hall. In prior budgets, we've offset the expenses for these buildings by roughly 13, 13, 13,000, 14,000. In reviewing our building rentals, the amount of money available in that account, we are comfortable that it's actually completely self-sufficient, and so no general fund contribution is required. However, since we've removed that from the general fund, we will need to be able to expend additional money from that revolving fund. And again, all of these, as listed in the Finance Committee Guidebook, give very specific reasons for which you can spend the money. The select board voted 5-0, and the finance committee also voted 5-0 in favor. Article 5 is another yearly article. It's the authorization of the select board regarding contracts in excess of three years. To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to enter into lease/purchase agreements up to five years to lease or purchase equipment for the town. Said contracts are subject to annual appropriations, or take any other action relative thereto. Under Massachusetts General Law, absent, and absent an approval from town meeting, the select board can only enter into those types of contracts for up to three years. This would allow us to enter into contracts for up to five years. A great example is sometimes we lease police vehicles, as well as copiers for town hall. The select board voted 5-0 in favor, and the finance committee voted 5-0 in favor as well. Article 6, Appropriations, General Fund for Fiscal Year 2025. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds such sums of money as may be necessary to fund the town expenses for fiscal year 2025, July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. Attached to the back of the Finance Committee Guidebook is the budget. Article 6 is the declaration of our town's priorities and a statement on how we choose to allocate the limited collective resources that exist. The operating budget enables day-to-day operations of the town by paying for recurring expenditures for programs and services, employee salaries, rents, utilities, supplies, insurance, and debt service. The libraries, schools, police department, fire department, council on aging, and dozens of other town departments rely on this funding to provide services on a daily basis. We're going to go through slides for the budget, but before I leave this slide, I want to note that it was submitted by the select board and voted 5-0 by the select board in favor, and 5-0 by the finance committee. This is a small screenshot, but again, it's located in the back of the guidebook. It's also available on town's website, and I have some details here. The fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget is $48.8 million, which includes the town's first contribu, the town's first payment on the middle school debt interest, which totals just about $1.23 million. When you look at the operating budget, which is characterized separately from the debt exclusion, folks will remember that town meeting authorized debt exclusion to fund the middle school. Debt exclusions assess that specific amount additional on top of the 2.5% levy limit. The total without the middle school interest is $47.6 million, which operationally, covering what we operate here at town hall and across all of our departments, is a $1.4 million The history on the middle school debt, in November of 2022, the town did its first short-term ban in totaling $7 million. In November of 2023, we rolled that short-term ban into a second short-term ban totaling $30 million. All of this is calculated by our cash flow, which includes, of course, reimbursements from the MSBA, and is tied to the construction schedule. At this point, in November of 2024, the last short-term ban totaling $30 million will mature. Interest will come due, and the town will roll this into a permanent bond. That's the 30-year bond that we talked about when the debt exclusion was being considered. Folks will also remember that as a part of that agreement, the select board, the finance committee, and the school committee agreed to endorse a plan that would offset that debt by contributing $1 million from the general fund, which was generally recognized to be the amount of money that we expected in new growth from the Toll Brothers Development, to each year of the 30-year loan, which will commence in fiscal year 2026. Over the course of the loan, that $30 million total general fund contribution will substantially lower the impact on top of the average tax bill. We work with the municipal borrowing agency called Hilltop to determine what the best approach is for the town in terms of financing. Obviously, just like a consumer, we're subject to interest rates, and Tinsborough's been fortunate to have a double-A-plus bond rating, which for a community our size is the highest bond rating that we can achieve. That will really, that will result in better interest rates, which obviously lowers the financial burden on the community. We had always planned on doing short-term borrowings until we were ready to roll this into a more permanent borrowing, and the construction schedule remained exactly what we thought it would, with our expected completion to be summer of 2025, which means that November of 2024 is the time that we should be rolling this into that long-term borrowing. This was first presented to the tribe board at its meeting on April 8, and a final discussion on the matter was held at the select board's meeting on April 22. One of the things that this budget does is leaves a comfortable level of excess levy capacity, which is the difference between what we could tax and spend versus what the budget proposes that we do spend. And that's important because when we go to renew our bond rating in November of 2024, the bond agencies, like Standard &amp; Poor, look at what your excess levy capacity is and what your available free cash is. Similar to consumer loans, if you're over-leveraged, that can result in a lower bond rating and higher interest rates. Free cash totaled $2.6 million when it was certified three weeks ago by the Department of Revenue, and the various articles on this warrant that include free cash appropriations totals just about $2.1 million, leaving about $500,000 in unappropriated free cash. That puts the town in a very positive position. In years past, we've gotten somewhere in the $250,000 in unappropriated funds. All of this, of course, will also help us in future years when times are tougher. Times are tough, but certainly, we're not in the same position many of our peer communities are in. Some of the new items that are funded in the operational budget for Article 6 here, $24,000 is restored in the fire department's budget for part-time administrative support. This existed in the budget in fiscal year '23, but at the last minute in fiscal '24, in order to balance the budget that had to be cut, the fire department has four employees on at a time, plus two members of the administration. It's one of our larger departments, and to not have administrative support to help with payroll, to help with expenses, scheduling is very unusual. It also includes a $50,000 increase in the general fund contribution to our roads budget. Over the last three years, the board has very conscientiously insisted on increasing what the general fund contributes to our road program. There are some slides later on that talk about our roads program, but it's a combination of the operating budget, Chapter 90, which is state aid specifically for road funding, which has remained flat for the last five or six years, and 75% currently of the cannabis excise, which is what was appropriated, or will be appropriated, from the Road Maintenance Stabilization Fund. The budget also includes a $10,000 increase in the highway budget to make what is existing a part-time administrative assistant, a full-time administrative position, and a $13,000 increase in the IT budget to increase a part-time support specialist position to a full-time position. And I want to note that the additional, an additional $10,000 is being covered from the PEG Enterprise Fund, which will allow us to cross-train that person to assist with our PEG operations. Some other budget drivers in fiscal year '25, we're not immune to the massive increases that we're seeing in trash and recycling. We did negotiate a slightly more favorable, I think, than we expected, three-year extension with Republic Services, but as the trash and recycling market changes, as more regulations about what can and cannot be thrown out go into place, the costs are just increasing at a rapid rate. It looks like the fire department's salaries have experienced a dramatic increase. It's not because anyone's getting paid anymore. This substantial increase is because for the last three years, we've been incorrectly budgeting holiday pay. So for a town hall employee, if you have a holiday, they just get their regular salary. There's no additional expense to the town. For public safety employees, because they have to work holidays, they get paid directly for the holiday, and so we budget that separately. Over the last three years, we haven't budgeted correctly, and at the end of the year, we're coming to the select board and the finance committee, asking them to make year-end transfers to cover the deficit. And so this reflects us correcting what should have been corrected a few years ago. That's the same case in the fire overtime budget. Another big area that we've seen increased costs is in our IT department, specifically around software and cybersecurity. The town, for very obvious reasons, maintains a cybersecurity insurance policy, which helps us in the event that we were subject to a ransomware attack. However, in order to maintain the cybersecurity insurance policy, every year, they add new elements that the municipality has to take, essentially protections, because the insurance company doesn't want to be responsible for a community that's not taking all the necessary precautions. And also note, on the software side, that while we saw a dramatic increase in what our primary permitting software is called Viewpoint, we were able to leverage the way they changed their contracts, which resulted in a higher increase, to shift services that we were using on other software platforms onto Viewpoint, thus allowing us to cancel different software contracts that would have brought that cost even higher. And then finally, the police department is getting an additional police cruiser. While their fleet certainly has benefited from funds from ARPA, they maintain a four- or five-year rotation, which is standard in that industry, and while they requested two new leases in fiscal '25, this budget only recommends one new cruiser lease. Questions on Article 6?
I had to ask you to, on the very first item, it says real estate, to define, to clearly list the 2.5% increase. This lumps the increase of 2.5% with the personal property tax. Why, why are we doing that?
That's how we have to show when we submit our tax rate recap. So what town meeting approves, it gets submitted directly to the Department of Revenue in November, and this is how they ask to see it. That number represents the 2.5% increase, plus the $250,000 or so that we anticipate in new growth on the real estate side. But certainly, we can post something on the town meeting page for a visual representation of how that's separated. But this is how the Department of Revenue will need to see it in the minutes.
Okay, in the past, they've shown the real estate property tax times 2.5% and showed the residents on a sheet just like this. That last year was about $750,000. So I, I would rather see the 2.5% clearly shown than lumped in with personal property tax for the residents to see it. You can show the state whatever you want. Will you, will you make sure we have that number ready for town meeting floor?
Yes.
Because I'm going to be asking.
Oh, yeah, we'll post it tomorrow.
Okay, but I'm asking town meeting floor, because people should know how much it's going up. $800,000, $900,000?
Sure.
Not lumped in with those other numbers.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. And I know we have to stay away from debates, but I object that the town has decided to reneg on participating in the $1.23 million debt payment. That's all we'll say this evening. We'll say more on town meeting floor.
Article 7 is the compensation of elected officials. To see if the town will vote to fix the salary and compensation of elective officers of the town as provided by Section 108 of Chapter 41 of the Massachusetts General Laws as amended for the fiscal year 2025, which runs from July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025. This article does not include any increases in stipends for the elected and appointed officials that appear on here. The one item I'd call your attention to is that the town clerk's salary is seeing a modest decrease. This was at the request of the current town clerk, who in developing the budget for fiscal '25 noted that because she is not seeking reelection, her, the replacement or the new town clerk will have less experience, and so this was a salary adjustment to reflect that. I'd also just like to point out that the dollar amounts you're seeing in Article 7 are not new appropriations. They are reflected in the Article 6 operating budget. The select board voted 5-0 in favor, and the finance committee voted 5-0 in favor as Article 8 is transfer of funds from free cash. To see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash, the following sums of money for the purposes described below, or take any other action relative thereto. $105,000 to the Other Post-Employments Benefit Trust Fund, otherwise known as OPEB, which helps meet our long-term OPEB funding plan commitment. This article includes $52,500 that appeared on the May 2023 annual town meeting, but again, because free cash wasn't certified, we weren't able to approve that, and it includes the fiscal '25 contribution. The town has, for the last several years, as a part of its OPEB funding plan, contributed $52,500 annually. $200,000 to the capital account to fund the 2023 roads program as outlined in the fiscal year 2024 Capital Asset Management Committee Report. This is another item that appeared on the May 2023 annual town meeting, but had to be pushed to this town meeting because free cash was not certified. Similarly, $60,000 to the capital account to fund the abatement and demolition of the former Council on Aging building located at 180 Lakeview Ave, having, not so recently, sustained significant water damage due to a burst pipe last winter. The town is not disposing of that parcel. The softball field that's there will stay there. We would likely resurface the parking lot and have spoken to the Recreation Committee and the softball group about putting in a more permanent bathroom structure and helping them with some of their storage needs. $50,000 to fund the FinCom Reserve Fund, which is to provide for extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures in fiscal year 2025. This reserve fund is established by the town's bylaw. It's existed for many, many years. It was not funded in fiscal '24, again, because free cash wasn't certified. To get money from the FinCom Reserve Fund, you have to demonstrate that it's justified, that it's extraordinary, and it's an unforeseen expenditure, and the finance committee has to vote in favor of releasing those funds. $300,000 from the capital account to fund the Norris Road Sidewalk Project, as was included in and recommended by the Capital Asset Management Committee in their fiscal year 2025 capital plan, and $25,000 to the capital account to fund the Littlefield Library Accessibility Project, as included in and recommended by the Capital Asset Management Committee in the fiscal year 2025 capital plan recommended by CIMC. These are the two articles that were not funded by ARPA. This is the last year that the Capital Asset Management Committee had the ability to utilize the American Rescue Plan Act funding, which it's leveraged for the two previous capital plans as well, and all of that was intended to not put any additional borrowing on the town. ARPA is under the jurisdiction by the federal law that established it of the select board, so while it appears in the Capital Asset Management Committee Report that was published, it does not appear on the warrant because that's authorized by the select board. The select board voted 5-0 in favor, and the finance committee voted 5-0 in favor. Yes.
On the sidewalk, North Road sidewalk. Well, where's that starting and ending? I mean, we've talked about a sidewalk there for a decade or so, but where's that beginning and ending? Will there be a map for, for residents?
This is starting at Frost Road and ending at the new school, at the school campus?
At that fir, all the way up, or just at that one driveway? You know, like you're coming up North Road, you have that driveway, that's actually only go out that way. Is it going to end there or on up a little further?
It'll go up further to the, it'll cover the whole campus.
So it'll be taking some people's property by eminent domain?
No, this, the reason that we focused on this section instead of the section that goes beyond where it gets windy and curvy, is that this was the area where the public right-of-way supported a sidewalk. What we will likely need to do is move three or four telephone poles, but at this, the way the project is designed and as presented to capital, it utilizes the existing public right-of-way. That's why it doesn't go any further.
I understand, but some people are going to be surprised that the right-of-way's in their front yard, but I understand that part, too.
Yeah, and certainly, like we do with all of our public infrastructure projects, there'll be community meetings before it takes place and notice.
But you know what I'm saying? People are going to be surprised to find the front yard as a sidewalk.
Absolutely.
Okay, so that's, that's going to be some input on that. Okay, so just my input is that there's $300,000 free cash for, for... for a sidewalk, and there's nothing to help the taxpayers for that $1.2 million.
Article Nine is the appropriation for the Ambulance Enterprise Fund for fiscal year 2025. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to be expended by the Select Board to operate the ambulance enterprise for fiscal year 2025 as follows. Their fiscal '25 budget totals $671,310. The enterprise fund is supported entirely by revenues collected through the ambulance service. Mass. General Law considers enterprise funds for business-like activities, and so the funds here do not appear in the operating budget. I do want to note that, right now, the estimated department receipts is $700,000, which would leave an estimated surplus of just shy of $30,000. As a part of our free cash certification, the Department of Revenue certified $98,960 in retained earnings from fiscal year 2023 for the ambulance enterprise fund, which means that the fund is completely self-sufficient and generating additional revenue which can offset future capital expenditures. That was recommended 5-0 by the Select Board and 5-0 by the Finance Committee. Article Ten, similarly, is an appropriation for the Sewer Enterprise Fund for fiscal year 2025. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to be expended by the Sewer Commission to operate the Sewer Enterprise for fiscal year 2025 as follows, or take any other action relative thereto. The Sewer Enterprise Fund's fiscal year 2025 budget totals $3,970,354. Again, the enterprise fund is supported entirely by fees generated by the Sewer Commission and not by the operating budget. The Select Board voted 5-0 in favor, and the Finance Committee voted 5-0 in favor as well. Our last enterprise fund is the PEG Enterprise Fund, which appears on Article 11. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $185,279 from the PEG fund to the general fund for the following purposes, or take any other action relative thereto. The PEG fund budget for fiscal year '25 totals $185,279. All of that is used to support PEG operating budget for public, educational, and government television access. The increases this year include the $10,000 coverage they're providing to cross-train the now-full-time IT support specialist position, as well as $40,000 in capital to upgrade cameras, switches, and TVs in our public meeting spaces. The Select Board voted 5-0 in favor, and the Finance Committee voted 5-0 in favor as well. Article Twelve, our appropriations from the Community Preservation Fund. To see if the town will vote a sum of money to be appropriated or reserved from estimated annual revenues of the Community Preservation Fund for the fiscal year 2025, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation for the payment of administrative expenses of the Community Preservation Committee, debt service, community preservation projects, and all of the necessary and proper expenses as follows. $3,500 to fund the Lake Massapaw Weed Control, which is an annual item. $350,000 to potentially acquire an affordable unit located at 10 Merrimack Way, which is subject to a foreclosure. This money would be granted to the Affordable Housing Trust to preserve what is currently an affordable housing unit. And at the resale of the unit, the proceeds from the sale would reimburse the Community Preservation Fund. $100,000 for a town center digital sign project to replace what is currently on the First Parish lawn, a orange highway sign on wheels that's become kind of a permanent structure that delivers messages to residents in code because it's small and you can only fit certain words. $7,000 to fund the Lake Mesopac Weed Treatment, again, another annual item. The CPC regulations permit a community to appropriate up to 5%, rather, for administrative expenses. Year over year, we've appropriated $50,000 and generally not spent close to $15,000. This money is for non-projects. So for instance, if the 10 Merrimack Way unit did need to be purchased by the Affordable Housing Trust, Mass. General Law requires that we perform an appraisal. We would be able to use the administrative expenses to cover that. And finally, we have two debt service payments. We're in year four of 10 on the First Parish Meeting House. This year's payment totals $235,625. And we're in year seven of 10 on the Old Town Hall Debt Service. This year's payment totals $188,100. Finally, we make annually three different appropriations to the three different reserve accounts as required by the regulations. $100,000 being deposited into the Historic Preservation Reserve, the Affordable Housing Reserve, and the Open Space and Recreation Reserve. This article is submitted by the Community Preservation Committee. Select Board voted 5-0 in favor. The Finance Committee voted 5-0 in favor, and the Community Preservation Committee voted 6-0 in favor. Article Thirteen, approved prior year bills. To see if the town will vote to approve payment on the following bills, which were incurred during a previous fiscal year, the fiscal year being fiscal year '23. Under Mass. General Law, you can only use your current fiscal year budget to pay bills that are incurred in the current fiscal year, unless town meeting appropriates otherwise. And so every year, we have one or two bills that either we received after the fiscal year closed or needed to be corrected before we could pay them. In this case, we have one invoice to our tax attorney for $418 from the tax office and a police detail to the University of Massachusetts Lowell Police Department totaling $741.39. The one thing I'll note about Article Thirteen is that this authorizes these departments to use their current budget to pay these bills. It does not appropriate additional funds to fiscal year '24. The Select Board voted 5-0 in favor, and the Finance Committee voted 5-0 in favor as well. Article Fourteen is acceptance of land with the clubhouse from Toll Brothers. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to acquire, by gift, purchase, eminent domain, or otherwise, for open space and recreation purposes to be under the care, custody, and control of the Select Board, certain property off Sherburne Ave identified as parcels A, C, and D on a plan entitled Tingsborough Country Club, Sherburne Avenue, Tingsborough, Massachusetts, dated February 12, 1987, and recorded with the Middlesex North District Registry of Deeds at Plan Book 158, page 89, and as parcel D on a plan entitled Plan of Land in Tingsborough, Mass., dated July 14, 1980, and recorded with the aforementioned Registry of Deeds at Plan Book 141, page 137, aka assessors' tax parcels 2773, 2774, and 2141. Together with any and all structures and improvements thereon, presently owned of record by Toll Northeast V Corp. And further to authorize the Select Board to negotiate and enter into any and all agreements entered to execute any and all instruments that may be necessary on behalf of the town to effect the aforementioned acquisition or take any other action relative thereto. This is the formal step required for the town to accept the parcel of land containing roughly 30 acres, which was required to be donated to the town from Toll Brothers as a part of the development on the former Tingsborough Country Club. Prior to donating it, Toll Brothers was required to install walking trails on the site, redo the parking lot, and renovate the clubhouse, all of which they have completed. Additionally, last year CPC authorized $800,000 at the May 2023 town meeting to construct various sport amenities on the site. Once the town formally takes ownership, that work can commence. The Select Board voted 5-0 in favor, and the Finance Committee voted 5-0 in favor. Mr. Crawford?
In regards to the stormwater issues that I've been watching on the videos or some of your meetings, has those all been resolved? Stormwater issues, I mean, the one, the waters coming down the pipes?
Yeah, I do believe that the Planning Board has concerns about water on the development side currently. One of the things that the Select Board did prior to certifying that the deed they presented us was good to be presented to town meeting was to enter into an agreement with Toll Brothers whereby they're required, at their own expense, to install underground drainage structures on the side they're donating to the town, so that if those water issues persist, they won't destroy the amenities that we're installing. That agreement also required that they go back to the Conservation Commission, which is the regulatory authority, and amend their stormwater permit so that in perpetuity, legally binding forever, the homeowners association on the development side would be responsible for future maintenance of those underground drainage structures. So the answer is that while the Planning Board is still working through the site plan portion that's under their regulatory authority on the other side, there are no lingering issues on the town parcel that haven't been addressed through that agreement.
We pretty much have them tied dead, and they can't reneg on any of that.
Absolutely, they have a signed agreement. We also have a bond, I should have mentioned. We obtained a bond from Toll Brothers that would cover not just the installation of the drainage structures that we're requiring, it would also help alleviate other issues if they fail to perform the requirements.
Would you happen to know, on the Pawtucket Boulevard side, two or three years ago, I sent photos in of that, of it being flooded on that side? You know what I'm talking about, Pawtucket Boulevard where the clubhouse is?
I know where you're talking about.
I sent that to Planning Board members, I sent that, yeah, to them. And they said they were going to take care of it. I'd like to know that that's been remediated. I see it paved, but is it going to be flooded again?
Mr. Salerno?
So I was on the committee, and as it relates to that flooding Pawtucket Boulevard, before Toll Brothers paved the driveway that goes from Pawtucket Boulevard into the clubhouse, they had to fix the drainage issue there. And it's been confirmed by our town engineer.
Absolutely. All right, Article Fifteen is a home rule petition for additional liquor licenses. This is a lengthy one, so I won't bore you by reading all of it. But this seeks approval from town meeting to authorize the Select Board to submit to the General Court, the legislature here in Massachusetts, a home rule petition to grant Tingsborough three additional on-premise all-alcoholic beverages licenses, otherwise known as restaurant licenses. What we're looking to do here is replace three licenses that expired in 2021 but were earmarked through special legislation for the 440 Middlesex Road development. That development obviously experienced delays due to the pandemic, and so they never got the last three of four licenses issued. We have three licenses available today through our general quota, which can go anywhere in town, as long as it's owned correctly. And so they'll be able to get licenses, but what we want to do is use this to essentially reimburse our quota license so that we're not spurring development elsewhere. If approved at town meeting, the Select Board would submit this to Representative Gary, who would then initiate the process through the legislature, typically takes about a year and a half. Questions on Article Fifteen? This was voted 5-0 in favor by the Select Board and 5-0 in favor of the Finance Committee. Article Sixteen is one of three dealing with special purpose stabilization funds. To see if the town will vote to terminate the dedication of 75% of adult-use marijuana local sales tax revenues to the Road Maintenance Stabilization Fund effective July 1, 2025, as previously approved by Article Three on the 2021 special town meeting warrant, or take any other action relative thereto. I have a few slides after this one that talk about road projects in Tingsborough. But essentially, what this is seeking to do is terminate the revenue dedication that is in place following an approval in fall of 2021 and lasts by statute until June 30, 2025. That would put 75% of cannabis excise into the Road Maintenance Stabilization Fund. The reason this article appears, and we'll talk about the next two, is because the following two articles seek to change that so that 50% continues to go into road maintenance stabilization, and 25% would go into debt stabilization. Important to note that currently, while 75% goes into our road maintenance stabilization, the remaining 25% goes into the general fund. In January, our town engineer presented to the Select Board our capital improvement plan beginning in fiscal year 2022, the work completed through fiscal '24, and the work that we're planning to do in fiscal year 2025. In 2021, we touched 3.6 miles totaling $1.2 million. We also, in 2022, touched 8.6 miles in a mix of preservation projects, which help extend the life of our roads, as well as full-deaf reclamation, which take the worst-conditioned roads and completely rebuild them. That touched 8.6 miles totaling $1 million. That was in fiscal '23. In fiscal '24, what's ongoing? 1.6 miles of a full-deaf reclamation that included Patriot Road and Deschanel Lane. That totaled $850,000. Fiscal year 2025, which is what we're working on now and has already been, one of the projects was already awarded, and one is going to be going out to bid shortly. The total miles are 3.2 miles. That reflects full-deaf reclamation, again, taking our worst-conditioned roads and rebuilding them, as well as preservation to take the roads that are currently in disrepair but not failed and keep them from getting to failed status. That cost is 1.2 million, and it touches 3.2 miles. Over the course of fiscal year '22 to fiscal year '25, the town will have spent $5.5 million on roads. Some of that is through grants, nearly $270,000 in the form of grants. The general fund contributed $638,000. From Chapter 90, which again is the state aid that funds road projects, that totaled $1.8 million. Capital granted over that period of time, $494,000. The Road Stabilization Fund, which again is currently funded by Cannabis Excise, contributed $2.1 million. And fiscal year '24 is the first year that the town received its allocation from the so-called Fair Share Act, otherwise known as the Millionaires Act. This year, we received $243,000. Changing, based on our current revenue, which is on one facility that's currently open, if we were to remove 25% of our current money being deposited into road stabilization, you'd be looking at about a $250,000 decrease, which matches pretty closely what we're getting from the Fair Share Act. Looking at what's approved for fiscal '25 and planned for fiscal '26, there's no immediate impact to making that change, particularly since we expect at some point in fiscal year '25, a second cannabis facility to come online. And while, make no mistake, that revenue will not double because the second one is open, the competition playoff will result in at least a modest increase. Article Sixteen was recommended 5-0 by the Select Board and 5-0 by the Finance Committee. Mr. Crawford?
First question. This does not become effective till July 1, 2025. Why are we doing it now?
Absolutely.
We have an annual fall, well, a special town meeting that's permanent, which is another subject. But, and next spring's meeting, so why are we doing this now? Is that because we're hoping the other store goes online, or what is it?
Well, we know the other store will go online. This was more of a planning, looking at, and you've been at a lot of the budget meetings, looking at our million-dollar contribution in fiscal '26, the state of our neighboring communities. We looked at what can we do now to set ourselves up to be able to not be talking about an override and maintain the million-dollar contribution? This was one of those options. You're correct, if town meeting doesn't approve that today, there's no immediate impact on July 1. There's a chance to do it in October, and there's a chance to do it in May. This was merely our attempt to get ahead of it so that going into the fiscal '26 budget planning process, we knew what we could expect on the form of debt stabilization.
And so what I heard you say was, we're doing this as another way to pay for the middle school?
That's not what I said. What I said was, the town and the Select Board has showed, has maintained that when the 30-year loan goes into effect, we have to contribute a million dollars from the operating budget. What I'm saying is, that million dollars is coming out of the operating budget. It's coming out of new growth. To avoid, on the operating side, forget the middle school debt, to avoid on the operating side having to make dramatic cuts or look at an override, we're looking at all of the possibilities to protect the town's financial interest.
Okay, I hear you, but what I'm hearing is, money that used to be spent on roads will not be spent on roads anymore because we have a new middle school.
So let me just comment on that. First of all, again, we don't expect the funds for the Road Stabilization Fund to go down. We actually expect it to go up, even if this does pass. The second point I really do want to make, you know, we do have the middle school coming up. We have to go for permanent borrowing. And we constantly are talking about how we can get the best interest rate we possibly can. This is one of the ways that we do that. If you were going to borrow, lend somebody some money, wouldn't it be great if you knew they were putting some money away in debt stabilization? You know, we do the long-term loan for the middle school, it's for 30 years. If we can decrease the interest rate by half of a percent, that'll save the annual, that'll save the taxpayer $75 annually. Of course, it's a sliding scale, but around $75 every single year. What we're trying to do is really look at our, fiscally, what we can do to put ourselves in the best position to get the best interest rate when we have to go for permanent borrowing.
I hear what Mr. Kane said and disagree with most of it, what he said, honestly. But just go back to the fair share, 243. Isn't that for roads and education?
That's our road portion.
That's just the road portion?
The state collects all of the money and then distributes it in tranches to communities. The education portion is reflected, they say, in the Chapter 78 directly to the schools. But the 243 is strictly our share for road projects.
That 243 is just for the roads?
Just for roads.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Article 17 and 18, I've kind of teased, but I will go through them. Article 17 assumes that Article 16 passed and that dedication was terminated. Certainly, if Article 16 fails, then Article 17 and 18 become null. Article 17 is the- Article seventeen is the article that would dedicate that fifty percent of adult-use marijuana local sales revenue collected under Mass. General Law's Chapter sixty-four and Section three to the Road Maintenance Stabilization Fund. Again, in essence, this is the vote that would change seventy-five percent to fifty percent going into the Road Maintenance Stabilization Fund. It does require a two-thirds majority and again would not be effective until July one, 2025. The select board and the finance committee both voted five oh in favor. Article eighteen is nearly identical, except for this is the article that would take the twenty-five percent and dedicate that to the debt stabilization account. Again, reserved for future debt payments with appropriation from town meeting. That would be effective on July one, 2025, and it would last through June thirtieth, 2028, as would Article seventeen. The section of Mass. General Law that authorizes these stabilization fund dedications requires that the dedication be in effect for three years and even after the three years continues unless otherwise terminated. So you couldn't do a shorter period if you wanted to. That was voted five oh in favor by the select board and five oh in favor by the finance committee. Article nineteen is a street acceptance for farmer's way to see if the town will vote to accept the layout of certain town ways below described, made by the select board under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter eighty-two, Section twenty-one through twenty-four, and any other enabling statute filed in the office of the town clerk with the plans there mentioned and referred to for a more particular description. This is the only street acceptance appearing on the warrant this year. A street acceptance takes what is currently a private road and makes it a public way. That means it becomes under the jurisdiction of our highway department for purposes of plowing and maintenance. This started with the planning board, which recommended its exception, certifying that the conditions of that development site plan and special permit were met. It was reviewed by our engineering department, which confirmed that it was constructed to current traffic standards and is in good condition. The select board held a first preliminary meeting to declare their intentions to lay out the way, which is when they formally set the bounds. And at their last meeting, conducted a public hearing where residents from that road were invited to attend to dispute the bounds if they had any disputes. There were none, and since all of those phases were affirmative, the final step is for town meeting to formally accept the public way. The select board voted five oh in favor and the finance committee voted five oh in favor. Article twenty, I will present and I will tell you practically what it does, but because it's a citizens' petition, I won't take questions on it. It was submitted by a resident. Certainly, if you have a zoning question, I'll do my best, but we generally don't represent citizens' petitions. This is a citizens' petition to amend the town zoning bylaw to allow continuing care campuses and assisted living uses in a B-two district to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Tingsborough zoning bylaw, Section four point three Table of Uses, by adding the language in bold and removing the language with a strike through or take any other action relative thereto. The simplest explanation for this article is that it would change the table of uses and what's permitted by allowing the continuing care campus and assisted living use now in a B-two district, whereas currently in the bylaw, it's only permitted in a B-three district. This was submitted by a citizens' petition, and so the select board was legally required to put it on the warrant. The select board generally does not make recommendations on citizens' petitions, but the, I can't talk. The finance committee voted five oh in favor and the planning board recommended it three to one. Article twenty-one is a zoning amendment, solid waste disposal to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Tingsborough zoning bylaw, Section four point three Table of Uses, by adding the language in bold and removing the language with the strike through or take any other action relative thereto. This article seeks to, kind of in a housekeeping way, affirm our current prohibition on solid waste disposal in the industrial district. Upon submitting our last zoning amendments to the Attorney General's Office, they opined that our prohibition in an industrial district is unlawful. However, upon doing our own research, it became clear that as long as the municipality had prohibited it as of July one, nineteen eighty-seven, that it was able to be prohibited. You may be wondering, why didn't we just tell the Attorney General's Office that? The Attorney General's Office does not amend or revise their opinion, so the only way to get them to essentially change their opinion is for town meeting to once again affirmatively vote to maintain our prohibition. This was submitted by the planning board. The select board recommended it five to zero in favor. The finance committee recommended four oh in favor with one member abstained, and the planning board recommended it four zero. Article twenty-two is a zoning amendment relative to the inclusionary zoning bylaw to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Tingsborough zoning bylaw, Section nine point one Inclusionary Zoning, by adding the language in bold and removing the language with the strike through or take any other action relative thereto. The full text is included in the Finance Committee Guidebook. And this would amend the town's inclusionary zoning bylaw by eliminating the ability of a developer to meet the affordable unit requirements of the bylaw using alternative methods. If approved, the developer would be required to achieve compliance by constructing the units on their development site. This was submitted by the planning board by a vote of four zero. The finance committee and the select board recommended it five zero. And I may pivot to Mr. Salerno, but I will do my best to answer. No, you, yep. Oh, no, no, I mean, I might not know your answer.
I'm glad Mr. Salerno is going to speak, by the way. But I just think I'd love to be in an explanation of what inclusionary really means because that's, was very.
Loosely used these days.
You had to understand and really pay attention to know what inclusionary means when people show up to town meeting.
Sure.
I think I finally understood it, that a large piece of land could be developed and instead of it being an acre and a half, a half acre of each of those persons could become open space.
Mr. Salerno?
Thank you. So the zoning amendment related to inclusionary zoning has very little to do with land specifically. So what it has to do with is the percentage of units that get produced, housing units. How many of them are designated as affordable in perpetuity, either by rental or by ownership? And what that typically means is that it needs to, there's a cap with regards to the overall cost for that unit that's determined by a calculation based on eighty percent of the area median income. So essentially, what the state does is it determines what that overall cost is and what that area median income is for the region around Tingsborough, and that sets the overall cost for that unit. There's specific legal procedures, or should I say statutory procedures, that a developer must go through in order to qualify or certify that those units are designated as affordable, which includes designating a monitor, identifying a lottery agent, and ensuring that the Fair Housing Act is complied with with regards to the folks that end up applying for the, I guess, opportunity to either rent or purchase those units. So inclusionary zoning is always referring to specifically affordability or affordable units as part of a development.
I don't want to have a colloquy like they do at the State Senate or anything. But I misunderstood, I forgot what article we were talking about. That's why.
Open space residential.
I thought we were talking about the next one. Okay. So thank you.
All right. Article twenty-three, zoning amendment, open space residential development to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Tingsborough zoning bylaw, Section nine point two Special Permit, Open Space Residential Development, by adding the language in bold and removing the language with the strike through or take any other action relative thereto. This article would amend the town zoning bylaw by striking the requirement that town meeting approve an open space residential development plan before a special permit can be issued by the planning board. This is in response to, again, a review of the Attorney General's Office, which deemed that that provision was unlawful because it treated different types of land differently. And Mr. Crawford explained, but I'll ask Eric to give a better overview of open space residential development.
Thanks. This amendment, sorry, I was doing some quick research while Colin was making an explanation. I think he's already explained a bit that the reason why this is on the warrant is because it was an oversight by the Attorney General's Office when they did a review of the recodified zoning bylaw when they received it. They had already stricken language in the multifamily housing bylaw, which required the same thing, which was town meeting approval. They've determined that was unlawful and struck it from the zoning bylaw. That's a legal, essentially maneuver that basically eliminates the need for a town meeting to take it into consideration. However, when we asked or pointed out why they did not comment or strike the requirement for the Open Space Residential Development bylaw, they acknowledged that it was an oversight on their part. And for the same reasons that Colin had mentioned on a previous article, they don't amend their letters or make any other, take any other actions until town meeting takes another vote. So the planning board and the zoning review committee had recommended that town meeting take a vote in order to remove town meeting's approval requirement for open space residential development, because the Attorney General's already acknowledged or indicated that it's unlawful.
If I might ask another question, it just came to mind because someone else brought it to my attention. What harm is done if we leave it like it is and let town meeting decide what they want to do?
The difficulty there is that you have a body that is not elected, nor is it consistent from meeting to meeting, making decisions on zoning and permitting. So when you have a development come in, you're leaving it to the whims of either the popularity of the developer or the popularity of the project and less about the criteria that the planning board is held to for making decisions for special permits. So the state already creates criteria that planning boards, which are elected, have to follow. It's basically already established in the zoning bylaw when they make a decision either to approve or deny an application. When town meeting is asked to make a decision about whether or not to approve something that's been defined as either permissible by right and/or by special permit in the zoning bylaw, there's no mechanisms for either recourse or criteria for them to follow. There's no way for them to issue a decision. If they denied it, what would the reasoning be?
So town meeting vote would stand?
The town meeting vote would certainly not stand, only because if they made a decision to deny something or even approve something and it was appealed, the Attorney General's Office would certainly strike it because the town meeting should never have had the authority over a special permit process.
Have we had any instances of that happening?
Not that I'm aware of. I think the town meeting has taken action on proposals for those. I don't know if they've been appealed from decisions that were made at the town meeting floor. But basically, Massachusetts state law does not authorize or designate any authority to town meeting to make decisions on special permits. It does it explicitly in Chapter forty-eight to planning boards.
Okay, thank you. I know you mentioned about boards making the right decisions and town meeting might not.
Oh, I didn't indicate that they make the right or the wrong decision. All I'm saying is whether it's a legally defensible decision, whether it's to approve or deny.
Yeah, because I've seen some boards do things. For instance, a Zoom meeting and during COVID, it made some pretty bad decisions.
Right. It's not an evaluation on the quality and/or accuracy or effectiveness of a decision, but rather it's a legal, legally binding effect. The reason why this is in the warrant article is because the Attorney General's already pointed out, Mass. General, conflicts with Mass. General Law, the Housing Fairness Act, as well as Mass. General Law, the town meeting doesn't have or have been granted the authority to make decisions for special permits. The Open Space Residential Development section of the zoning bylaw says that that is determined by the planning board by special permit. Yes, there's a provision in there that says that it would have to be approved by town meeting first. The Attorney General's Office has already pointed out that that isn't the non-legal component of the zoning bylaw.
Okay, I'm fairly confident I can explain Article twenty-four. It's a zoning amendment on farmers' markets to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Tingsborough zoning bylaw, Section four point three Table of Uses, by adding the language in bold and removing the language with the strike through or take any other action relative thereto. Currently in Tingsborough, if you wanted to conduct a farmers' market, you would need to obtain a special permit from the select board. That process entails filing an application, paying a three hundred and fifty-dollar filing fee. We would perform a legal ad in the Lowell Sun, notify Butters. Two to three weeks later, we would hold a hearing. We would grant a special permit. You would then, at your own expense, have to take that to the Registry of Deeds, record the special permit, and then you could have a farmers' market. This amendment would change that so that as long as it's in a business district, a farmers' market is permitted by right, meaning there's no special permit. However, it would continue to be regulated by the Board of Health, which oversees things like food permits, restaurants, et cetera. So it's not taking away all of the regulations. This article would simply drop the requirement that you needed to get a special permit from the select board. The select board voted five oh in favor. Finance committee voted five oh in favor, and the planning board voted five oh in favor as well. All right, I'm going to tee up Article twenty-five, but then our expert Eric Salerno will present a few slides covering it. Article twenty-five, zoning amendment, MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District to see if the town will vote to amend Section ten, Special District Regulations of the town zoning bylaw, by adding a new subsection shown below or to take any other action relative thereto. This is the town's response to the MBTA Communities Act, which requires communities with some level of service, or in Tingsborough's case, adjacent to service provided by the MBTA, to adopt a zoning district or districts where multifamily housing is permitted by right. Tingsborough is required to comply by law because it has been classified as an adjacent community. The zoning article creates three sub-districts, which Eric will talk about, all of which are located along Middlesex Road. Although this language allows the development of a multifamily unit, or project without a special permit, the planning board retains its site plan review authority. The select board voted five oh in favor. The finance committee voted three to two in favor. And the planning board voted four oh in favor. And now I'll turn it over to Mr. Salerno to walk us through it.
All right. Thank you very much. As Colin had mentioned, this is in response to the legislation that was passed in the Chapter three fifty-eight of the Acts of 2020. That is referred to as the new Section three A of Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight, which is also known as the Zoning Act. This was created in order to stimulate economic development and address the housing crisis by encouraging new housing that is located somewhere near transit. It is part of the state's 2021 economic development legislation, and it requires very specific communities, one hundred and seventy-seven in all, to create a zoning district where multifamily housing is allowed by right. Some of the purposes of the MBTA Communities legislation include the, it is the, it is part of the Commonwealth's strategy and effort to address the shortage of housing, the demand for which is far outpacing supply, or the new development for the last nearly forty years, resulting in costs and valuations that have consistently outpaced inflation. It's also to diversify the suburban housing stock, to include housing that is suitable and more accessible to a broader spectrum of community members, to address the number-one reason that major employers have listed as a competitive disadvantage for Massachusetts, which is housing availability and cost. It's also to address the zoning restrictions on multifamily housing that directly contribute to the state's housing shortfall. It is aimed to remove barriers to create housing suitable for young people, older people looking to downsize, and others who cannot afford or do not want a single-family home. Just to extrapolate a little bit on the zoning restrictions on multifamily housing, folks might ask with regards to what is the evidence for that? Essentially, the number of units that have been constructed in Massachusetts over the last fifty years, multifamily units have dropped off fairly significantly, believe it or not, over the last several decades, despite some of the development that you may have seen. And that has directly contributed to the housing shortage in the Commonwealth. This slide shows the extent to which the MBTA Communities legislation extends. The green communities are rapid transit. Commuter rail communities are also connected to the rail. Adjacent communities are sort of like a greenish tan, which is what Tingsborough is. And then the lightest tan are adjacent small towns that are very lightly populated communities that happen to be adjacent to rail service. I'd like to point out that although Tingsborough's requirements under the MBTA Communities legislation, which I'll describe in a moment, include density and unit capacity yields, the, each community category has its own specific requirements for yields. Tingsborough's happens to be seven hundred and fifty, but commuter rails and rapid transit communities have much higher zoning requirements. So what is going to be required, or what is required for Tingsborough? The MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District is for zoning only. The state is requiring communities to pass zoning, not develop or construct actual units. The district size for Tingsborough is fifty acres and a minimum of fifty percent of its overall district area must be contiguous, and no sub-district can be less than five acres. The density is required to be fifteen units per acre. And if you do the math, that's how we come up with the seven hundred and fifty unit capacity. There can be no age or bedroom restrictions on development, and the location should be near transportation and/or commerce centers. In Tingsborough, the affordability percentage or the requirement for those developments is at twelve and a half percent of the units. That is two and a half percent higher than the maximum ten percent that was set by the state. The community wanted to ensure that the, any MBTA Communities proposals matched as closely as possible to its existing inclusionary zoning requirements. to its existing inclusionary zoning requirements. And 12.5% works out quite nicely to a developer-friendly eight-unit development project. So you'd have one out of every eight units is 12.5%. And that's one of the reasons why the zoning review committee recommended that. The community did go through a specific step of having an economic feasibility analysis conducted in order to get approval for that 2.5% increase from EO HLC, and that was done with funding that we received as a grant from the Mass Housing Partnership. The legislation requires multifamily housing by right, as I had mentioned, and I wanted to explain what "as of right" means. Very generally, it means that special permits, variances, or zoning amendments wouldn't be required in order for the proposal or the multifamily project to get through the site plan review process. No additional energy or other types of restrictions could be exclusively applied to the overlay district. That wouldn't have been otherwise applied to any other types of development. And the site plan review process with reasonable conditions are allowed. We were very specific to ensure that the same site plan review section of the bylaw will apply to the MBTA Communities' proposals, and we've checked in with the Attorney General's office, as well as the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, to ensure that that section of our bylaw would be compatible and compliant. The next slide explains a little bit more about why residents in Tingsboro might want to consider complying with the legislation. First and foremost, it happens to be the law. The Attorney General has made it extremely clear and maintained and expressed in multiple advisory letters that compliance is not optional. While there are at least one lawsuits related to this legislation, those, at least several of those lawsuits were brought by the AG's office and may not be likely to have any impact on remaining MBTA communities. There are, I was made aware of this morning that there are some, at least one lawsuit where I believe Milton did file and questioned the validity of the legislation itself. However, all legal advice that communities have been receiving is that it certainly seems like Section 3A of Chapter 48 is just as legal as Chapter 40B. Another great reason to approve and comply with the MBTA Communities Multifamily Requirements is that grant funding depends on it. So this is the stick portion of the legislation, and the state essentially listed several programs that would be directly affected for communities that are not in compliance. The Mass Works category, housing choice, community compact. And the state has gone beyond just those listed in the legislation and now take MBTA Communities' compliance into consideration for eligibility for others. The town of Tingsboro has utilized more than $7 million in grant funding across just three specific programs that would now be only available to communities that are in compliance. And I'd like to point out that the Mass Works program specifically has contributed over $6 million, six and a half specifically, to the Westford Road projects, our sewer extensions, sewer extension to 440 Middlesex, as well as our most recent $2 million grant at 93 Kendall Road. Some additional reasons that you might want to consider compliance with the MBTA Communities Legislation is that it does happen to align with the goals that Tingsboro has listed in its own housing production plan passed in 2019, which was adopted by the planning board and the select board. Some of those goals include providing a wide range of housing options so as to meet the housing needs of a diverse population, addressing the needs of first-time homebuyers, creating diverse rental units in terms of types and number of bedrooms, supporting the creation of workforce housing units, and to develop rental and ownership portion, develop rental and ownership options for seniors, people with disabilities, and veterans that will allow them to live independently. Next to last, it happens to make economic sense. Potential multifamily housing, which, as you'll see soon, is mostly located in the northern commercial corridor along Middlesex Road, would support the retail and hospitality strategy that's been helping Tingsboro successfully compete with tax-free New Hampshire. And lastly, quite frankly, it's the right thing to do. Multifamily housing provides more affordable places to live for essential community members, including the likes of schoolteachers, police officers, firefighters, small business owners, artists, chefs, workers, medical professionals, and young professionals. So give me an opportunity to describe what Tingsboro's proposed strategy has been. Tingsboro formed the Zoning Review Committee, which consists of members from the Select Board, Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, and residents at large, and worked together with Northern Middlesex Council of Governments to develop this compliance strategy. The Zoning Review Committee drafted an action plan, which was reviewed and approved by the Select and Planning Boards and submitted to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, formerly known as the Department of Housing and Community Development, back in January of 2023. And that essentially created a roadmap with regards to what the town was going to be doing and where it might be considering to place those districts in order to arrive at this moment for proposal at town meeting. Over the past year, the committee has held more than 10 public meetings specifically to discuss MBTA Communities' compliance. They have met many more times than that to discuss zoning topics. And at those meetings, they identified district boundaries, discussed where the districts should be located and the merits of all of them, as well as drafting the zoning language itself. We held two public information sessions this past winter that were held for constructive conversations about the law itself and its requirements, the drafting, the draft zoning language, and the overlay zoning district boundaries. Drafts of the language and the overlay districts were then sent to the Attorney General's office, as well as the Executive Office for Housing and Living, Housing and Livable Communities, for preliminary review, and the Zoning Review Committee incorporated the minor revisions that we received back from those two organizations. I'd like to point out that if town meeting passes the MBTA Communities' language and those two zoning amendments, we fully expect to be compliant. The Zoning Review Committee had some specific objectives that they expressed and feel that they had adequately addressed in the drafting of their zoning amendment, as well as the identification and definition of their zoning district boundaries. They were seeking to employ an overlay district that would ensure the underlying uses are maintained. So I wanted to include that to point out that this is an overlay district, and it doesn't change any of the existing uses that are permissible in the underlying areas. They wanted to use the zoning requirement or this legislation to support some of the objectives that I had mentioned earlier that are listed in the Housing Production Plan and Master Plan. They were seeking to mitigate the potential impacts of potential development and the likelihood that proposals are received at the same time by identifying three distinct sub-districts with varying sizes and different levels of, quote, "developability", as opposed to having one giant congruous or contiguous district. They wanted to identify land area with recent development for at least one of those districts, specifically to occupy the largest sub-district, which would happen to be, is required to be 50% of our total district area, in order to postpone development proposals as far into the future as possible. And that's where we've got basically a proposal for a district where we already have housing that's been developed. They wanted to include a sub-district that offers actual short-term multifamily development opportunities with a reasonable number of units in an area that would benefit the retail and hospitality corridor from an economic development perspective as much as possible. And they wanted to include a sub-district that might limit the short-term potential of proposals, but could potentially serve as a hedge against the possibility that the industrial development that's already permitted behind the Olive Garden and Nature's Remedy locations, in case that does not come to fruition. They've also included an effective, an effective as-of date that complies with the legislation's December 31, 2024 deadline, and have had discussions with the Attorney General's office, as well as town council, about the validity and applicability of incorporating a future effective date. So what has this strategy led to in terms of actual district locations and potential, I guess, unit yields? There's three sub-districts. The one on your left is the southeast Middlesex Road location, where it represents the 50% contiguous area requirement and has a 411-unit capacity. But we're not expecting any short-term or even long-term proposals for development in this district since it has been recently developed with housing. And it's the location in the southern, actually, you can see it on the map on your right-hand side. It's the purple area next to the Merrimack River towards the southern portion of town. The district in the center is referred to as the northwest Middlesex Road District. This is 15.1 acres. It is just outside of the B3 district, and it happens to be located in the industrial district section of several parcels behind Olive Garden and Nature's Remedy. It has a 227-unit capacity, but the, again, the Zoning Review Committee and the community isn't expecting any short-term proposals because this is where we already have industrial development that's been permitted. However, if that permitted project doesn't come into fruition, the Zoning Review Committee hopes that the opportunity to incorporate multifamily housing development at that property could potentially provide creativity and flexibility for options to have those currently and long-term undeveloped properties developed. The last one is on your right. The Pheasant Lane Mall parking lot area is in red. This is a 12.3-acre parcel or section, sub-district, that includes sections that have multiple owners. It has good accessibility. It happens to be the smallest sub-district area and has 183-unit capacity. This is an area where there is reasonable expectation that there could be short-term proposals. That doesn't mean it would be tomorrow. It doesn't mean it would be next month. It doesn't mean it would be next year. It could be at any specific time, and it would still require the property owners themselves to make the decision that they wanted to provide a proposal. It is also the location that would support, would have the best potential to support the retail district corridor itself. The remaining slides are the specific language for the zoning amendment itself, and that will bring us down to Article 26, which specifically requests approval from town meeting for the districts themselves. So that covers most of the strategy associated with how the Zoning Review Committee and the planning board and the communities come to the proposal for Article 25, and I'm happy to answer any questions about it.
Mr. Salerno, it's too bad the state put us in this position. This is really sad, but this is what socialism looks like. Really sad that we're in this position. The other meetings I've been to, we often kind of dance around a couple of things. Okay, I appreciate all your professional remarks you made, but you also have the floor for a long time to put some opinions in also, okay? Maybe not your opinions, other people's opinions about good or bad and for the community. You know, so that's kind of problematic, but I didn't ever thought that Toll Brothers would have gotten approved at a Zoom meeting during COVID either. The golf course, okay? Planning Board 5-0-0. Conservation Commission 8-0 against. Conservation Commission Director scathing, no way we'd do that at Toll Brothers for the golf course. But it happened, and I was in the waiting room and was unable to speak. So don't tell me things can't get done. Just if these are ever approved and somebody wants them, they're going to do it. The Horse Corral, Chateau Merrimack, just a year or two ago, a developer came in and had plans laid out to put, to put townhouses in that until we found out it had a conservation restriction on it. Contractors can't wait to come to Tingsboro. We know it, okay? Especially for projects like this. So any of these projects, if there's as right on those specific zoning, they're going to come.
Sure. I certainly wasn't intending to insinuate that specifically the 12.3-acre portion, you know, that was a section where we felt like we were specifically making an opportunity in order to support our hospitality and amenities in the retail district.
I understand, sir, and I think you heard my, we're not supposed to do that this evening, but my objections to that, were to be two cannabis stores there if children are going to be living right within a thousand feet of it. I wonder if there had to be two cannabis stores that these children have to be bussed by. So, I mean, there's lots of discussions, and we haven't discussed what this really means. To get 750 units of housing on 51 acres of land, I think it is, or 50, whatever, 50, at least 50, I think it's 51, that's three-story buildings is the only way you can get that, correct?
They are not required to build 15 units per acre, but we would anticipate that when we put in the, there's, the state's provided what's called a compliance model. So it's essentially a combination of mapping tools and spreadsheets in order to identify whether or not you can get the, quote-unquote, "yield" that the state's asked for. The short answer to your question is, yes, in most cases, you might require three stories in order to accomplish the yield that we were seeking, which also helps us limit the overall area that the district would affect.
Correct, but our current recommendation is 50 acres, 750 units of housing, which is 15 units on each acre, correct?
The density is 15 units per acre, and I'd like to point out that based on the strategy that I just described, the Zoning Review Committee was specifically trying to mitigate and protect the community from immediate development opportunities or immediate development vulnerabilities by identifying two districts where it's extremely unlikely to receive proposals in the short or even medium term. And they've limited the area where there is short-term potential to the smallest district where we have the best economic...
See a look on my face. I've already said that I debate that, whether that, what they're recommending is true. And the builders, if they see a monetary gain, they're going to come to Tingsboro and build them, okay? And they're three-story units. In every one of those proposals, it says three-story buildings. Each one of those, if you look at the little fine print in there, to reach 750 units of housing, they're three-story buildings, which are, what, are 42, 45 feet high?
About 36 feet.
Only, they're only 36. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent. The one thing I wanted to note on Article 26, although Eric certainly explained it, is that that's the formal approval of Article 25 becoming a map. If Article 25 fails, Article 26 obviously is not in question. Article 26 was approved or recommended 5-0 by the Select Board, 3 to 2 by the Finance Committee, and 4-0 by the Planning Board. That includes all, that concludes all the sworn articles for Tuesday, May 7. Again, town meeting is one week from today, 7:00 PM, Tingsboro Elementary School. Childcare is available. Tomorrow is the last day to sign up for the shuttle from the Council on Aging. All this information is on the town website. Go to Residents on the menu bar, and Town Meeting appears right off to the right. And tomorrow, we'll post on the budget page the breakdown of the real estate and personal property so folks can see that heading into Town Meeting. Of course. And again, if anybody saw this presentation tonight, was watching it at home or is watching ahead of Town Meeting and thinks of other questions, the email is administration@tingsbrowma.gov, spelled a long way, or call 978-649-2300, extension 100. That's all I got. Thank you, everyone.